We're going to bring to order the Board of Selectments meeting for May 20th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have no appointments this evening. Our TA finalists, their interviews have been moved to Wednesday. So we, first thing on the agenda is a reconfiguration of the board. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to keep the board intact, the way that we are with Chris as Chair, Lisa Weiss, and myself bringing up as clerk.
I will second that for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Traditionally, the person who's outgoing is the Chair, and there's no reason that I cannot be the Chair.
Actually, there was a precedent set by Tom just a few years back for consecutive terms.
I am not Walter.
I didn't imply that you were. I did a lot of soul-searching this weekend, and there's a lot of stuff that we need to do as a board. If we, can't even read my writing, we need to start acting like the leaders of this town that we are. It was very apparent in the last election that the public has lost a lot of trust in us. Let me say that again, and let us ponder that, that the public has lost trust in us. So what are we going to do to change it? And "we," I mean collective, "we," including everyone in this room, that if we expect professionalism in the lead roles, we must showcase it. If we don't want the negativity, then we have to stop being negative. If we expect the department, behavior of department heads to change, we must change. If we want the cattiness and just the pure rudeness to go away, well, we need to model it. It's not us versus them. It's not people ganging up on people. We're going to disagree. We're supposed to disagree, and actually, I look forward to disagreeing with all of you. We come from various backgrounds, we bring various knowledge, we bring various experience and education. It's doing what is right for the town. We have to be clear on our information that we provide. There's many critical changes that are coming along. The first one is this Wednesday, where we're hiring a new TA, and then shortly after that is a new fire chief. Now more than ever is the time that we work together and not against each other, and that's part of the reason why I am making a motion to keep the board intact the way that it is.
The board fell apart under Chairman Keefe's, and this also looks an awful lot like retaliation for my not supporting her. So I am perfectly capable of doing the Chair position. There is no reason why we can't stick with what has been tradition, other than that one particular case.
There is no retaliation at all. You can talk to people that know me and that have known me. I don't retaliate. Whatever happened a week ago is done and over. The past is the past. The election spoke for itself. You know, the citizens of the town voted, and that was their vote, to retain Chris. So I'm not retaliating against you, Lisa. That, to me, is a waste of time and a waste of energy to do that. We need to bring this board forward for the town.
This isn't going to help with that.
And this is not, no, this is not going to help that, with this sort of disagreement that happens. We all know that changes need to be made in our behavior and in other people's behavior, and it needs to start tonight.
I'd like to be recognized, if possible.
If I recognize you, then I have to recognize everyone.
That's your decision. If you want to have a conversation or not, that's fine.
Well, and it is a decision of the board.
It is.
I'm okay with listening to the people. That's fine.
Lisa?
Yes. This is part of the problem I have with you being Chair, is not actually listening to people and shutting them down.
I think the problem that you and I have is that we disagree occasionally. It's not that I don't let you speak, because I do. I do let you speak, and I let Peg speak, and that's part of being the Chairman. And if we disagree when a vote is taken, then we have to be able to move on, instead of bringing it back up again and again.
You know, it's ironic, Lisa, that you mention about shutting people down, because if you look at last week's meeting towards the end, you had brought up that there was an ethics violation, and Mary tried to explain that it wasn't what it is, and you basically said, "Yes, this is." And you shut down that type of discussion. So it's, and even the comment was made that, "I don't want to start arguing, but we're starting again here." So I'm uncomfortable with that type of interaction. If we can't get along with Mary, who granted, she's not a voting member, but she's an integral part of this board, she gives to us a lot of information, she keeps everybody together out there. If that can't work, then this isn't going to work.
You guys are going to do what you're going to do. Are you going to let Wayne speak or not?
Absolutely.
I guess, I guess the thing that I just wanted to say is, you know, having been a select board member, although it be 26 years ago, I think the tradition that Lisa's bringing up, you know, other than that one instance, which I wasn't even really aware of, you know, has been followed. I think, you know, I'm listening to what you're saying, Peg, and I respect that that's your thought process. I do think that, you know, if you're trying to unify the town, you're right, the town did vote, there was a very narrow margin difference, and I think that, you know, that just basically indicates that there was, or still is perhaps, dissatisfaction with the way that the board is operated. And I think that in continuing the same structure, you're basically, you know, making an indication that you're feeling empowered, that, you know, that side won, and that the other side doesn't, because you're basically reading a lot and talking a lot about tradition, and openness, and transparency, and respect for the town's traditions, and so the first motion you're making as a new board after the election and expecting people to move forward is to say that you don't trust somebody despite your disagreements. I mean, I've seen the meetings, I have my own opinion, we're all entitled to our own opinion, and you're the three that have to operate working together, but I guess I would just say that, you know, perception is reality, and I think that, you know, the perception, in my view, would be is that it's not being open to change and being willing to give a person who by tradition has the slot to be Chair, to be Chair. So that's my viewpoint.
And I just want to follow up your comment, that I never, ever said that I never trusted, that I did not trust Lisa. I want to make that abundantly clear. Please do not imply that those were my words, because they are not.
Okay. Well, then maybe I didn't use that word, but the action of not allowing somebody who by tradition to take the Chairperson role, to assume that, for whatever reasons, you know, I think that that says something, so.
I think there's been more than one instance where that's happened.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to be recognized, if possible. It doesn't seem fair to me. And I, I think if you had a really concrete reason, specific reason, not to elect Terrence Chair, I would, I would listen to that, but I've been to many selectman meetings, and I feel like you all have an equal part in this.
Absolutely.
And that there's no reason why one person shouldn't be, and if it were you, I would say the same thing. There's no reason why the next person in line, she hasn't done anything in black and white that's been wrong, and she hasn't done anything, there's no reason for her. I think if you're trying to build trust in the community, that fairness is very important, and we want to see that you're acting fairly, because some of the things I feel like you have done in the past, we haven't understood, or I haven't understood, the fairness of it.
Unfortunately, there have been a few examples of animosity with Lisa and Mary, and to be painfully honest, I'm not going to air them on camera.
Okay. Well, there's two sides to every story.
I understand that, but with that one side, I was directly involved, Tricia, so there's no saying. A friend of a friend of mine told me at the jungle store while he was at the dump who said that she said. That was me that was involved. And yeah, I'm not, out of courtesy, I am not going to bring the specifics up.
And with all due respect, Mary is not part of the select board, and there's been circumstances where I feel like she should not be putting input in. She is an administrative secretary, so I feel like it's you three. It has nothing to do with Mary. Shouldn't have anything to do with Mary. It should have to do with you three.
Well, it's that we all have to get along.
Yes.
We do all have to get along, including Mary, with each of us. And it's, I've, you know, I've known Lisa since she got on the board, which is two years now, and she's had time to work things out, and hasn't done it at this point, so I.
There's two sides to every story, like Lisa.
Yep. I agree. And there's, and there are specific reasons, but I'm not here to air them in front of the public.
Okay.
And if Lisa wants to talk with me afterwards, I'd be happy to talk to her.
So your specific reason for not electing is because she hasn't gotten along with Mary? Is that what you're saying?
It causes quite a bit of tension.
And there's, and there's some trust issues, I think.
And it's, we have to trust each other, we have to have each other's back.
Well, we have to trust you.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And seeing you and Chris ganging up against Mayor, up against Lisa constantly is not building trust.
It's not getting up. If you, if you look at the votes.
It looks like that, it looks like that, from a person's point of view. So this just feels like, I have to say, this just feels like the same thing. That's my two cents. And I don't feel like it should have to do with anybody's relationship with Mary, it should have to do with your relationship with each other.
Mm-hmm. It does have to do with the relationship between each other. Yes.
I feel the same way. There is a lot of talk about this board in town. As a matter of fact, it's for this reason I threw away a vote for the first time in my life. I did not vote for anybody for this, this position, because the discontent, and this to me looks like a railroad job, and it looks very political, and it's, it fits with everything else that's going on in this country about fairness and about what's right, and this is wrong, in my opinion.
Thank you. Peter?
So two things. Lisa, you talked about retaliatory behavior on their part. What evidence do you have of that? It's bound to irritate either side. If they elected you Chairman, it would irritate someone, and if they elect Chris Chairman, it'll irritate you. What evidence do you have?
Traditionally, I should be Chair this year. There may be a very few exceptions, but in general, I would be next in line for Chair. So when that does not happen, and there is not a very good reason, which there is not a very good reason being presented, then yes, it does look retaliatory.
I think that's a perception of yours. So the other thing.
And if, if it's a perception of mine, then it's going to be a perception of quite a few other people's.
So you and Wayne have talked about it being custom, and there's no doubt that it's custom for you to get the Chair position. I want my board to make the right choice. I'm not saying what it is, but custom should not drive the choice. The best practice and best decision is what should drive the choice, not custom. Custom is not the way to think. I want you all to think out of the box and make the best choice. If it's the wrong choice, that's a different story, but it's thinking out of the box, and that should be commended.
Lisa was elected too.
Yes, we have, our constituents. You're right. Okay, another minute. Okay, Walter?
Yeah, I've been hearing a lot about this, the lack of total cooperation amongst the board. I'm aware of the worst of the disagreements and everything, and just, you know, for the audience, what's going on here is kids play. Everybody thinks that everybody is hunky-dory again. This is nothing. And it doesn't make anybody bad, we're not, we don't have a bad board, and I'm speaking with someone, you talk about railroaded. I worked on something where it's proven in the end would have saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, and done something. And my two colleagues said I was meddling in an agency, and didn't have me be Chairman. That's the first time it's ever happened. What they didn't realize, I didn't want to be Chairman, but I didn't let them know that, you know. I don't need the headaches, but, you know, I worked for you, and I worked for you, and you represent my philosophy and how I see the town, and I respect you two to make a decision, and I'll stick with the majority of people, with you two people, obviously. So whatever you think will have a smooth board, the smoothest board, and achieve the things we need to achieve, and oversight, due diligence, and all that stuff, you have to make your decision at this time.
Go on.
I wasn't planning on speaking. Thank you for recognizing me. Peg raised the issue of, I'm probably not going to paraphrase this right, so.
It's okay.
Don't buy my words.
I won't.
But the idea of, the fact of the last few weeks in particular, being sort of polarizing and divisive within the community, and the acknowledgement that that's not good for the community, because one of the things about Berlin that most people will say when you meet them, is that it's a community that pulls together and tries to do the right thing, and, and that's what we all want. But I feel that as a board, the three of you need to acknowledge, as you have articulated, that the, the election did create divisiveness and separation, which appear to be about equal, I'm not going to count the numbers. So I think that moving forward, to echo something else you said, about pulling together, moving forward, getting work done, doing the right thing, that it would be, if nothing else, a gesture and an understanding that to elect Lisa Chair, we'd number one, do the tradition piece, but also we demonstrate the board's willingness to overlook any animosity or disagreements that have occurred in the last time period, and acknowledge that, okay, we can do this, we can absolutely do this. Nothing more articulate than that, sorry. No genius here.
No magic, April?
Sorry.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your input. We have a motion on the table, and I seconded it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
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 So motion passes. So we're going to keep the same slate as previously.
I have to vote no confidence.
I think you need to give us a chance. I think you need to give us a chance after this election. It was very contentious, and I, I don't want to see that go on any further, any longer in this town. It's enough. Enough is enough. And we need to move on and be able to deal with how the votes happen on this, on this board, and everybody is entitled to their opinion, and, and that's all I'm going to say. I strongly believe that.
Your actions here just prove that that's not the case.
Well, that's not true. Everybody has their opinion, and that's what we just shared. So we'll move on. We have a reserve fund transfer for elections. The present balance is $559. The request is for $269. It was a heavy-duty election with three seats vacant, so needed more counters and tally the votes of 809, and it took longer because of vacancies. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm not the department head for the clerk. Department head for June, though.
You just signed selectman.
But also needs a signature from Peg.
I think hers is enough. You'll be too.
Yeah, I just signed under here. The next thing we have on the agenda is a center village study, which, Jay, do you want to come down? Jay is from the planning board, just re-elected also, correct?
Hey. So we discovered a grant opportunity from the Office of Environmental, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Planning Assistant Greeting. So what it is, is $30,000 that we could use with our consulting group to try to work on a long-range vision for the town center. Is there a way, or a period of 20 or 30 years, we could develop the town center into something better than it is today? Maybe affordable housing, maybe housing for families, maybe senior housing, stimulate business.
Revitalization.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of good things about the town center, but.
Sidewalks.
It's kind of limited in growth, because there's no municipal sewer or water, and there's no sidewalks, you know, and there's just a lot more that we might get out of it. And so what I've been wanting to do is get, is get a project going where we could get a group of people together to try to do a long-term vision, and get everyone's input, and then have it happen over a period of time. So this was kind of an interesting grant opportunity, and what they're looking for is reduction of land, energy, and natural resource consumption, and provision of sufficient and diverse housing. And one of the ways you get that, you know, use less land to get new housing, is by concentrating in an area, and what better place than the town center? So it seemed like a good fit. What we need from you guys is a, from the board, is just a letter of support to go into the grant this Friday.
Okay. I did talk to Tim for a few minutes this afternoon, and he went over the fact that there's a 25 percent matching.
Match, yeah.
Grant that the town would have to supply, and he said that there are funds in the, the master plan.
Right. We've got some of that, and then there's additional money from another grant that the CNPRC that we're working with has. So it's not, it's not going to require any money from the town.
Even though it does say that. Right. But it would be money from the town, but yes.
Match. Right, it can come from wherever.
Right. Okay. Does anybody need any more information?
Questions, bud?
No, was this what you sent around earlier?
We have it here on our letterhead. I'm not sure what, you have a printout?
He's got it on the letterhead.
Yeah, I just cleaned up a little bit. It's the same thing.
Is there any more questions that maybe Jay could answer? Walter?
Yeah, I'll, I'm certainly going to want to get on that committee, but I'm telling you right now, someone who's lived here since the mid-'40s enrolled the border health laws in 1971 that stopped development all over the place, they're putting sewage in wetlands. No sewage, no water. There's nothing you can do. You don't want to increase the density in the center of Berlin. Maybe a sidewalk or two. We've got a traffic problem, I don't know how we're ever going to deal with that. You know, one time they wanted to put the road down where the railroad is, maybe I shouldn't have fought that so bad. That, for $30,000, you could put in sidewalks and solve any problem there is in Berlin's city. We don't want any more intense development.
Yeah, this is $30 for planning, right? And the result may be just what you said, there's nothing we can turn against. Or there might be, the result might be that we find some long-term way to solve a whole bunch of problems. I mean, most of downtown is a giant rock, so you've got to deal with that, and no, no water and sewer makes it hard for new businesses to move in, and housing need added, but.
It's been Berlin's sake, yeah. No water and sewage.
I second Lisa's motion.
The population's growing.
So we have a motion to approve, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How soon will it kick off, the study?
I'm guessing late in the year, and I'm actually not sure.
And he'll come back and give updates?
Sure. It was, I discovered it Friday night.
I know, that's what you said, the email, that it was one of those, you know, giddy-up type of, type of sign.
Do you need another sign copy, Mary, or?
Yeah, I would like a signed copy for our records.
You want to copy this, or do you want us to do this one too?
I'll come get it pretty quick.
Okay.
Why don't you give it to Mary?
You need to go. Which one?
She's looking for volunteers to participate.
Okay, go.
Okay. Thanks, Jay.
Number five is what the Chief was here for, but he's running off to a fire on the highway.
Oh, okay.
So we could hold five till the end.
Sure.
Chris, can I give you a similar update?
On the?
On the EDC thing that's related.
A minute.
Yeah. So in brief, you, you all are aware of the meeting last week, the regional?
Yes.
You're aware of the regional EDC meeting that took place last week?
Yes.
In it was discussed an $80 million grant program that is open as of a few weeks ago, and only stays open for two months. 10% of it is allotted for towns with a population of 7,000 or less, and I've been in touch with Dave Smith at DPW, and I will be in touch with the library regarding their tight tank. The 7,000 below, 10%, $8 million, does not have to have an economic development component in it. So Dave, I brought to Dave's attention maybe some road repair. He brought to my attention, and obviously it'll ultimately be up to you, that he would like a salt and sand shed at the new location. So Dave and I are going to briefly, we're going to work on it to the extent that I can, and I'll do the same thing with the library, and maybe we'll get a grant. Now, typical grants are 2 million and above, and we're only looking for hundreds of thousands at most, so that might increase the likelihood of it being, no pun intended, granted.
When was the timeline that this needs to be done by?
It's within a couple of months, and the decision will be made by summer, but I'll, I'll stand top of it with Dave and whatever.
Okay. Keep us posted, let us know what we need to do.
Could be beneficial. Thanks.
All right, so we're going to come back to five. Scheduling.
Four. You missed four. No, you missed four.
Oh, I don't know why I missed that one. Prioritization of the office-based location, and the transition assist to the town administrator, possibly using this office where the veterans' agent is.
I spoke with Tom Galvin today, and they're actually scheduled, they have a meeting tomorrow night to discuss this, and they're scheduled to bring a plan to us next week, so I would motion to table this.
Can, do we need, or should we, I should say, should we let them know that this is imminent, or do you think that?
Tom Galvin is on the screening committee. I'm pretty sure he knows it's imminent.
Yeah.
I didn't know about the plan. It wasn't discussed at our meeting. Just saying. I was wondering, I was going to actually ask the three of you after, where was?
There's a, there's a committee that we put together to look at space needs, and they've been.
I was curious, the same thing.
They've been coming up with a plan, it's gone a while, but they actually, they're scheduled to meet tomorrow night to sort of finalize something to bring to us next week.
This is something I was going to ask off-camera, but thank you for your answer.
Yep, that sounds like a good idea. Go with that. Yeah, all right. And then I think there was a date when they were able to come.
Well, you were asking them to come next Tuesday.
Okay, is that the date?
Tom was under the impression that they were coming next Tuesday.
Okay. Yes, I saw the email.
George, next day, and they would have a report for you in the fall.
All right.
I'm not sure that the whole committee knows what's going on.
Well, maybe the. Well, maybe the overall plan will be in the fall, but the immediate need of that is next Tuesday.
So if Tom already knows, he'll pass it on.
Okay. Sounds good. Scheduling for coffee talk, the next coffee talk.
Yeah, definitely want to get one more in before the summer hits and everyone kind of bails, so sometime in June. Because I figured what we could do is take a look at all our, the previous meetings that we've had, what we've talked about, what we've done. Somebody brought up traffic, I forget who, actually was on my list to talk about later, that there is going to be a meeting with Tom and a couple other folks to talk about traffic. So I was going to get from you like the main points of where we need to talk about that. I'm thinking Pleasant into the center of town, South going into Clinton, our poor friends on Gates Pond, the two crosswalks in the center of town, and then where Derby, Boylston, Ball Hill, that area, right there. So I didn't know if there were any other areas that we could bring into that. But yeah, but that, I mean, that's just one. I want to get back to people, let them know about that. I want to get back to people and let them know about the railroad ties that are hanging out around town that no one seems to want to do anything about, with a sign on it that says "free." But yeah, so I just wanted to pull one, and I talked to Hank a couple months ago, and he said that he would try to come depending upon his schedule. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for him just to come and hang and talk to the folks. You know, we've had two decent turnouts. I'm really, really happy with that. And maybe it's a good opportunity to get input from the town on our town administrator, what they want to do, what they want to see, what they want to hear. And then when she or he, you know, sits in a couple months, then we can say from the town.
Okay. Do you have a particular date in mind?
No.
Do you have any vacation plans?
I don't. Piper's got a pre-up appointment tomorrow, and I don't know when her surgery's going to be.
Okay.
So I would rather put this off till next week.
Okay, that's fine. Because I will need to get in touch either with Leanne to pop into the town hall, preferably upstairs, because last year's was kind of, last time was kind of squishy downstairs. So if we can go up, or if possible, over to 19 Carter, where maybe it's a little bit more comfy for folks. So I'm fine with it sitting.
So we'll just put it on next week's agenda?
Yeah.
Somebody just check for dates with Leanne, and then that might narrow down.
Well, no, we got to wait for Lisa.
No, I know.
Yeah, so after next week, yeah, if you could just circle them around.
Okay. And we have our open meetings, selectmen's meetings for 2019 and 2020. Did everybody have a chance to look at this?
They look pretty standard.
Yeah. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, seconded. All seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Yes. And we are skipping number eight, correct, Mary?
Eight and nine.
You skipped seven. Do you mean to?
Oh, oh gosh, what is wrong with me tonight? I just had a new grandbaby today. I'm a little off.
Grandbaby bread.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So meeting minutes, we had quite a slew of minutes. I'm going to leave it up to you two, because I did not have a chance to read them.
I read through them. Everything seemed okay. I went back through my notes to see if there was anything missed. I couldn't find anything, but there were a ton of them, so.
So do we want to, do you two want to take a vote? And otherwise, we can defer till next week.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So this makes us caught up. Mary?
I'll put four.
Okay.
But two of those being town meeting.
That'll take a while.
Okay.
No, they're short.
All right. All right, so we are going to skip eight and nine. The annual town meeting update. There's a letter to legislators. Is there a letter in here, Mary?
Yeah, keep flipping, one more flip. Nope.
Nope.
See the yellow post-it? That's it.
That's it.
Okay. So that first page needs to be read into a record. That's your vote.
Right.
And the second, two pages is the, three pages is the letter.
Okay. So where it has come to the Board of Selectmen's attention that the warrant for the 2019 annual town meeting held on May 6, 2019, and May 7, 2019, was not delivered or mailed to each voting household in complete consistency with applicable law, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to request that the governor file special legislation on behalf of the town of Berlin as follows. An act validating actions taken at an annual town meeting in the town of Berlin. Section 1 notwithstanding section 10, chapter 39 of the general laws or any other general or special law or town bylaw provision to the contrary, all acts, proceedings, and votes taken by the town of Berlin at its 2019 annual town meeting held on May 6, 2019, and May 7, 2019, and all actions taken pursuant thereto are hereby ratified, validated, and confirmed to the same extent as if the warrant for that meeting had been delivered or mailed to each voting household in the town at least five days before the meeting as required by the town bylaw. Section 2, this act shall take effect upon its passage. So I have made this motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything else to be said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the letter that is attached to it.
Fire EMS chief recruitment update. We did have an email. Does anyone want to give that update from the email? I believe it was just letting the screening committee members know that they would be hearing from them soon.
Correct. So there's really not much of an update?
Not too much.
It's moving, but slowly.
And not, this is not on here, but the TA search update would be that the screening committee met Saturday. They interviewed six candidates and narrowed it down to three. Any, anything further you'd like to add, Janet?
No, we just picked, you know what? I honestly have to say MRI did a fabulous job, and I hope that it, you know, continues because I believe they're also involved with the fire chief as well.
Yes.
So, you know, all six candidates were all different, and I think any one of them that they had narrowed down would have served our town well. It was really a tough decision. So I think you have three good candidates, and I hope that one of them will accept your offer, and we'll move on with the new TA.
Yeah. And I believe I can give the names of the candidates.
I believe it's Public College, yes, that's what we were told.
It was narrowed down to three candidates. Margaret Nardawix. Can you tell me who, I don't have written down where she?
Margaret is from Deerfield.
Yeah, she's from Deerfield. She is a current TA with some years of experience. I have all their resumes in my card, too. I'm sorry.
She actually is the town clerk over in Amherst right now. She was the TA over in Rutland.
Right.
Yep, and Rutland spoke very highly of her. And then there's Kristen, who is--
Kristen Lass.
Yeah, she's currently working in Shrewsbury as the assistant, they call it a town manager. She takes a lot of leads on quite a few different positions and departments. And the last is--
Thomas Hutchinson.
Yeah, and he has also been a TA a few times, and he's also from a distance. And the two people that are, Kristen is from Boylston, which was kind of nice because she understands the regional school system, which was, you know, kind of nice. We didn't have to really explain that. The other two felt that they would be looking for housing in the area, so they would be here Monday through Friday and then go home on there on the weekends. That's, because they both felt that the distance they were traveling might be too far.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's neither here nor there, but I think you'll have a good choice.
And Tom is also the current town administrator for Conway.
Right.
Do you fear that they may not accept the offer?
You know what? Like MRI said, you know, they're all got their names out at different places, and that's why we wanted to move quickly so that, you know, we could be one of the first to offer because some of the towns are still doing their elections and town meetings, and a lot of these people are intricately involved in that. So that's why we are kind of at an advantage where ours is at the first of the month, and some of the others are at the end of the month. So, you know, you don't know.
It just makes me think that their level of commitment is not there.
No, they all, actually, that was one thing we discussed. I wish Tricia was here. One thing we did discuss, they all have a long level of commitment at their current positions.
And for the Berlin jobs.
No, I think that it, I mean, I'm just repeating what they were said. I mean, there are other positions that are out there. I mean, what if they didn't get the Berlin job? They couldn't not go on an interview. You know what I'm trying to say? You know, that would be, you know, you're looking for a new position, you put your feelers out, and you, you know, that's why we wanted to be the first group to jump at it so we could, could offer it first. That was the impression I got from MRI.
And I have to say, I was very impressed with the resumes.
Yeah.
So.
It was a really ni, it was a long day, but it was, it was, we had a really good time at it. I have to say, the committee was phenomenal.
Everybody got along and eventually came up with the three candidates.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Do we want to do new business until Jim gets back? Or do you want to?
Jim went on a fair call.
Yeah, he's not getting any back. Do we want to talk about, well?
We've got a clock running in terms of answering this records request.
Right. Do we want to have some discussion about the public records request? And he's requesting to have town council to get involved.
It is my feeling if Jim feels he needs town council for this, then we should provide it to him.
I go back and forth, but in the interest of the town, and in the interest of whoever this is going to impact, I'd rather err on the side of caution than to say no, and then we're in a pickle. So hopefully it'll be a very short meeting that he needs someone from town council.
I suspect it would be. All right.
All connected with the town council.
Are we all in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other new business?
I had two. They both came from the Clinton item. I thought this was a good idea that maybe we could get on since our fireball bandit seems to be alive and well.
Yeah.
Well, and again, I cut this out. It came from Wes Boylston. The selectmen discussed sending a formal request to their state rep, Jim O'Day, and state Senator Harriet Chandler, expressing the town's support for a NIP bottle refund bill. There's a bill that has been introduced on the Hill. It's got about 75 legislators behind it. The proposed five-cent deposit on NIP bottles was essentially a tax if people didn't return it, and the money would go to the state's general fund. Selectmen agreed something had to be done about the proliferation of the NIP or single-use bottles. So we're all concerned about it. It shows up. It seems kind of like an easy-peasy, maybe there's no impact right away, but I don't understand, I would feel that we would, as we backed Northborough for SA Farm, that we should put together, I mean, I can reach out to Wes Boylston, maybe we can get a copy of what they sent and just figure out if there's a specific number on it, you know, before we send it along. Reach out to Representative Naughton and Senator Tran. Thanks.
You okay with that? Okay.
And then the next, the next one?
Update this?
Yeah, yeah, the next one also came from the item. The Baker-Polito administration announced more than $2.6 million in a brownfield redevelopment fund grants to support the environmental assessment and cleanup of 13 contaminated and challenging sites across the Commonwealth. This one specifically talks about Clinton. Rob McKay actually tracked me down Saturday while I was getting my blades sharpened on the mower. He asked, I know, he asked about what we were doing for the Tolman Farm. And so I just happened to pick up the paper. I don't know if we can get in on this grant or not. Yeah, yeah, are we in on that?
I had gotten this from Gene Mitchell before the election, and I told Rob that I would get in touch with him about--
Oh, perfect.
--taking a look at this with Dennis Ferbay.
All right. Because again, Hank talks about how it's going to help one of the sites in Clinton, so jump on that bandwagon, too. That's kind of cool that you have it as well. All right.
All right. And I will, I can get in touch with Rob and Dennis and see if they would like to meet to talk about if this would help us out--
Yeah.
--as far as the Tolman property.
And then just one more. I know the parade is on Monday. Mr. Bradley had asked if the selectmen were going to participate in the parade. Wanted to check. Are we?
I had actually talked to Jim Kincaid and Sharon about marching with them because they were short people.
Okay.
Okay, so you will be there? All right, if--
Do you need riders still? Or marchers?
However you want to do it. You want to march or ride? We can come there.
I heard you, I can't march with my leg. I heard that. I'll be at the tail end of the parade. It'll go on for at least another hour before I get to the center. All right. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to check to make sure that we were all doing it.
Sure.
Good.
All right, so I have--
I did have a question today that I don't believe we have, I have an answer to yet. It was about, do we have a date for Old Home Day?
It is September 28.
All right. I believe the owner of, or the manager of the general store, I think has--
Sharon was talking to him.
Okay, was, they were, I think Hank Naughton was encouraging them to get involved and wondered if I had a date, and I didn't know of it. So September 28. All right.
Is it going to be on self-comment?
Old Business? All right. We do have need for a short executive session. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session, sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The town administrator.
Are we not coming back?
And we're not coming back into open session except to adjourn.
No.
Keep a eye.
Keep a eye.
Stone eye. Thanks, Mr. V.